Fellas, would you please lead us tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the same justice for all.
Tonight's agenda is available on the counter along with the white request to speak cards. The request to speak cards should be completed and turned in to the clerk on my right prior to the completion of any staff report. For those speakers who would like to speak on items not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of this commission, please write item A on the card. Or if you wish to speak on a specific item on the agenda, please write the agenda item on your card. All speakers will be limited to three minutes, and the clock is on my right, which keeps track of your time. Speaking in public may cause some individuals to feel uncomfortable, so everyone is asked to be professional and respectful to all speakers. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and televised, so all speakers are, in order to be recognized, must be called on by the chair, come forward to the microphone, and state your name for the record. Today we have two items on the agenda, one that includes a public workshop and an update on a significant report. At this time, we will take up presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda within the jurisdiction of the commission, and I don't see any delivered to me at this time. Okay? And next, we'll have correspondent and staff communications from the planning commission secretary. Mr. Tilly, is there any information?
Yes, one item to note for the planning commission as well as are any folks watching the meeting tonight. As of today, we released what's called a notice of preparation for the proposed Liberty Specific Plan in Southport. There's a 30-day circulation period on that. This is an important time to receive input on the scope of the analysis that's going in the IR that we are working on. And there will be two public scoping meetings on May 24th. First one here at City Hall at 3:00 in the afternoon, and then the second one will be at the Sacramento Yacht Club that same evening beginning at 6:00. Persons may attend either or both, or otherwise submit their written comments to us on that during the 30-day period.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tilly. Is there any disclosure of exportate communications among the commissioners? None? I do have one. On item number, let's see, number two, I spoke with a neighbor in the close proximity of the location of 600 Sutter Street, and his name is Edward. That was the only name I have, and he's a resident nearby. Okay. And the next item on our agenda is consideration and approval of the minutes from the April 21st commission meeting.
Does no approve?
Commissioner Strenfeld moved.
Second.
And Commissioner Austin seconds. All in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? No?
Abstain.
Abstain. Ms. Tumblr abstains. And any, no, no's okay. And so, this motion is approved, and we move on next to our regular agenda item, which is the public workshop regarding proposed Argent Recycling Conditional Use Permit at 600 Sutter Street. Ms. Allen.
Good evening, Chair Guerrero and members of the commission. This item is a public workshop for the conditional use permit for concrete and asphalt recycling plant, which is proposed to be located at 600 Sutter Street. The project would allow for the intake, processing, and recycling of demolition materials, and the project's proposed hours are 7 to 4:30, up to 260 days per year, with night operations proposed for up to 20 days per year. The project includes concrete crushing, material stockpiling, and also includes infrastructure improvements to Sutter Street. The project is proposed to utilize a semi-portable crushing and screening plant, which would be located on the north six acres of the project site. The plant is proposed to process approximately 100,000 tons of materials per year and up to 200 to 300 tons per hour at peak operating capacity. The finished products will be stockpiled on the northern six acres of the site, and the remaining nine acres are going to be reserved for future stockpiling at this time. Besides the crushing equipment, the only other structures on site would be a portable office trailer, scale house, portable truck scale, scale, and portable restrooms. In terms of issues surrounding the project, probably the most significant is the infrastructure improvements to Sutter Street. Staff acknowledges that Sutter Street is currently in somewhat of a state of disrepair, and because of that, one of the aspects of this project would be requirements that the project applicants do repairs to Sutter Street. They're proposed to have approximately 56 one-way trips per day in and out of the site, and we acknowledge that that additional truck traffic would not help the road, and so, that is one of the reasons why during the long lead-up to this, we have had discussions with the applicant and reached an agreement that they're prepared to do road repairs from West Capital to the project site, which is approximately 1,800 feet of Sutter Street, which is the vast majority of it. In terms of other issues, we did have an AB-52 consultation with cultural representatives from the Yoshehdehe Wintun Nation regarding cultural issues at the site. They did meet with us out at the project site and discuss the project. Their main concern had to do with areas where excavation could be over 24 inches in depth. There are two areas of the project that meet that, the construction of the detention pond, which is in the northwest corner of the project site, and the drilling of the well. And so, one of the conditions, mitigation measures of the project will be that monitors from the tribe will be on-site when those portions of the project are under construction, and should anything be discovered during other portions of the site, all work would stop until a representative of the tribe could evaluate it. In terms of air quality, that is another issue that is being evaluated. The reason for the drilling of the well on the project site is to allow the ability to have adequate water to spray down the materials to make sure that excess dust doesn't impact the neighbors in close proximity. There are several industrial and at least, and one residential structure in close proximity. We've also sent the initial study to the air district to see if they are going to have any additional comments regarding air quality, other than the watering down of the materials. Lastly, in regards to noise, a noise study was done for the project. This is in an industrial area. It's also in very close proximity to both a portion of I-80 and the UP tracks, and so, it wasn't much of a surprise to find out that it's very noisy out there already. There are high base levels of noise. However, the noise study concluded that the project was not really going to add much additional ambient noise. In one area, it did exceed the exterior noise level for the backyard of the one residential structure by one decibel over what is stated in the general plan. However, it's so little that that is actually within the limits of what the modeling can consider acceptable, that it might be a slight variation, and also, one decibel is so small that the human ear can't actually differentiate it. So that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time or later. I'd also like to note that the applicant is in the audience and has a short presentation for you, so.
Thank you. Are there any questions by the commissioners before we open it up for public comment? Yes, Commissioner Strenfeld?
Ms. Allen, could you tell us a little bit more about the history of the site? I was looking at the overhead. I found it odd that it's a large 15-acre parcel in the middle, you know, in a very industrial area. It just seemed odd to me that hadn't been developed to date, so I was wondering if there's more history or background on the actual site you could provide us?
Oh, well, over the years, there have been projects proposed for that, but the infrastructure is really lacking out there, and so, every project that had been proposed never really got off the ground because of the fact that it really wasn't feasible to provide water out there. The water line that runs down Sutter Street is very small, and so, for a project that would fit on that, it would have required an applicant to upgrade that, which pretty much caused every project that had been proposed before this one to decide it wasn't feasible.
Is that the reason for the well, as opposed to tying into the city water?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, Ms. Tumblr?
I was just a little bit concerned about the noise. I understand there was a noise study that was conducted. Was that done, well, I'm asking this specifically because it says 20 days per year, there will be operations at night. So was the noise study done at night at all, or was it only during the regular operational hours?
It was done over a 24-hour period. I can't remember the exact interval that they did, but they did test it over a 24-hour period and averaged the numbers.
Yeah, and our outdoor threshold is also based on a 24-hour, you know, average period as well, so that's common how these are done.
I have a question on the, I guess it's relating to the air quality and the water use. If there's a well, how is the water used monitored? Is it still monitored, like a water meter, or?
The water from the well is going to be stored in a tank on-site for use. To the best of my knowledge, it's not a metered well. I'd have to get back with you on that.
Okay. I'm just curious, because if there's a lot of dust, then they have to use a lot of water to suppress the dust. You know, I know it's raining today, but since we're in a drought still. And then the other question is on the end-use of the material. Maybe that's going to be in the presentation, but what the end-use is for?
The end-use will be for construction projects in the greater Sacramento area. Concrete and asphalt on demolition projects will be brought to the site, crushed, and then reused in different projects. In some cases, they will actually bring material to be recycled and then pick up new loads of it before they leave.
Okay, okay. Locally, then?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, go ahead.
One follow-up question, since the infrastructure's been brought up. So in terms of drainage and sewer for the runoff from spraying down the activity, is there adequate drainage in that area and a place for the runoff from spraying things down and go?
That's one reason for the detention basin on the site, is to make sure that the runoff has somewhere to go, and the site will be graded appropriately, so that's where the runoff ends up.
This area lacks storm drain infrastructure, so have to be more creative, and that's how the pond, that it's there for. Otherwise, the drainage mostly in the area is sort of, you know, roadside, which is, but there is no underground storm drain in this whole district sector.
So would that basin be lined, or would the water just then seep into the ground?
I believe it is lined. The applicant can confirm that for you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? No, I just have one question, and maybe you can answer, or the applicant can answer. The street being is going to be paved, but I noticed that there's a lot of trucks, you know, activity, there's a lot of trucks that are parked towards the end of Sutter Street, and so, it looks like it's used frequently by trucks where the street will need to be, you know, maintained on a regular basis. Who is going to maintain it? Who's going to cover the cost? I know they'll lay down, they'll pay for getting it taken care of, because the street is in disrepair right now, and who's going to cover the ongoing maintenance?
Well, yeah, that is the sort of the bigger issue over here, that why, you know, because there really, it's a city street, but there really isn't any funding, you know, to really maintain, you know, really the balance of our streets, including this one. What we have long, you know, thought was the way to go out here, and what hopefully will still may come to fruition, is actually an assessment district to help fund with the overall infrastructure needs in this area. There's numerous parcels, and the, as Kathy mentioned, we've looked at various project ideas out here on the site and others many times, and the long dead-in water line, the lack of storm drain, the substandard road, et cetera, always holds the area back. So it does seem to us that eventual assessment district that the property owners would, you know, agree to form, would probably be the best mechanism to assure not only upfront improvements, but then long-term O and M.
Okay. And what I didn't observe when I drove through it, trying to make sure I didn't have the biggest pothole in the street there, was the lighting. How, what does the lighting look like, given that it'll be, there's residents there, and residents have family members that come and visit, and just thinking of, you know, there being something going on, and making sure there's lighting in case, you know, there's traffic coming through for work, or, and even right now, it's, you know, it's so, the road is so bad, you can only go, you know, maybe 10, 15 miles per hour, so you have to go slow, but once it's paved and everything, trucks may end up going faster. So is there enough lighting to cover that, or are you going to put speed bumps, or is it going to be a way to keep it, you know, so that, you know, the residents are safe there?
I don't think the project proposes street lighting, only the actual repairs to the road itself.
Yeah, street lighting would be another part of, you know, hopefully a future assessment district to get that area, you know, up to snuff, since I'm sure many of those businesses are operating, you know, well beyond, you know, daylight hours out there. There's several small businesses on that road. But we'll look into the, what we go into the roadway design before we come back for the hearing on this one.
Okay. Yeah, that would be good to know. Thank you. So are there any other questions? I'll open it up for the public comment, and the applicant can come up and provide a presentation for us now. You can please state your name. I don't want to have it listed here.
Damien Galford.
I don't think it's on. Is it on?
On the actual mic.
Oh, there you go.
There we go. Okay. Damien Galford with Enviremine. I'm here speaking on behalf of the project, representing Argent Materials. We have Bill Krotinger with Argent Materials, and also the landowner, Jim Colter, here today, giving me a brief presentation on the project. Thank you, Kathy, for all the information about the project. As Kathy mentioned, this is a small, relatively small, as far as these things go, concrete and asphalt recycling facility located in the city of West Sacramento. This is located in a heavy industrially-zoned area. In my opinion, it's got really good conforming land use to this type of use. It's known, heavy industrial, and quite a bit of history on the project. Jim, the landowner, has owned the property for about 20 years, and he's had numerous projects come before him. You know, investors, folks wanted to develop the property, because it is in the city of West Sacramento, heavy industrial zone. But it's pretty drastically underserved as far as water goes and infrastructure. So this project is the first one that has come, that's actually feasible. So by working with the city, city staff, coming up with alternative solutions for this project, we've been able to come up with solutions to meet the needs for supplying water. The area has water pipe to it, but it's severely underserved for water pressure for emergency services. So drilling a well is one alternative to that problem there. And then improving Sutter Street itself, roughly 2,000 feet of Sutter Street is going to be improved because of this project as a component of it, and that's 24-foot wide swath down the middle, paved with asphalt, up to current standards, which I don't think it ever has been paved to current city standards. It's just kind of one of those roads that was part of when the city became a city, and it never really got brought up to standard. So this project would bring Sutter Street up to current standards, all at the cost of the landowner. So, are the slides up? So, it's a fairly small project. These projects are very common throughout the state. What we have here is the aggregate sustainability in California. This is a map put up by the Department of Conservation, and this shows our demand for aggregate, and also the 50-year demand, and also where we, how we're meeting that demand for aggregate. And this aggregate is material that's used to, for our construction projects, our roads, buildings, basically anything that requires asphalt or concrete comes from aggregate. Aggregate is mined primarily, and around here, areas like Cash Creek are a big source, Jackson Highway area, Highway 16, those are the kind of two main sources. This project in itself would help supplement. It's not a mining project, but by recycling those materials that were mined, virgin materials that were then demolished through building, demolition, recycled, it would help supplement our demand. So Sacramento region, unlike, or like a lot of the other regions in the state, aren't meeting that 50-year demand. Can we go to the next slide? So what we have here, in the center, we've got this big circle with a red around it, and that's Sacramento County. Right now, we've got 42 million of our 670 million tons permitted. So that's less than a 10-year supply that we have permitted. These projects take, I've probably seven or eight of these projects going right now. They take anywhere from five to 20 years to get permitted, and sometimes never. We're running up against stronger and stronger environmental and political barriers that make them harder to get permitted. So having a site, a recycle site, that's able to recycle these materials and help supplement these mine sites, is really beneficial. So as you can see, we've got to the north of us, Plaster County is meeting their demand. A little bit farther north, Yuba, Marysville, they've got the Yuba Gold Fields up there. It's probably the largest aggregate deposit in the state. But Sacramento itself is really lagging. So a project like this in the city of West Sacramento is really going to help supply aggregates locally, and it's really a local resource, because it's very heavy material. Trucking it more than 30 miles becomes fairly economically infeasible. You know, the city of Sacramento doesn't, isn't blessed with the geology to have a mine. It's just not in the cards. The geology is not here. So having a recycle site is really the only option for having a local source of aggregates. Argent Materials operates, they're a small company. They've been in business roughly three years. They operate one other recycling facility, very similar to the project that is in front of you today. This is a picture of their Oakland site. They've, we've got a crusher, excavator. This is pretty typical operations, what the West Sacramento facility would look like, probably minus the fog. Next slide. This is just another shot of their site, just to give you an idea of, you know, what one of these operations typically looks like. On the right, you have a picture of rubble, which is demolished material that comes in, and then it is processed through, and then turned into actually usable aggregate. This is the scale, where all the trucks that are going to leave the site are going to run across to ensure that they're not overweight, and also a scale house. These are two, these are very similar facilities that are proposed for the West Sacramento site. And then there is the truck entrance and exit. So you guys had a question about what this material is used for. So essentially, this site is a processing, holding facility for materials that are demolished from local projects. Right now, you know, there's a lot of infill projects, and infill projects require demolition before you have construction. So we've got a building that needs to be demolished. It's demolished. The rubble is put in trucks and then hauled to a facility like what we're proposing here in West Sacramento. Comes in as rubble. It's processed, crushed, screened, sized properly, and then it's to be, and then it can be sold as usable aggregates. And probably the most common use is road base. Road base that goes beneath the asphalt and concrete on our highways, our city streets. So that's, there's a number of different uses for the product, but that's probably the most common use for the product. And asphalt itself is the number-one most recycled material by volume in the United States. So, and it's 100% recyclable. So we've got a, you know, this is a recycling facility. Helps keep all of our projects local. I know you guys are doing a lot of development here in the city of West Sacramento, a lot of redevelopment to come. So having a facility like this is a huge benefit to the city, having a local source for aggregates, and also a local facility to take your rubble. And this is Sutter Street. Sounds like few of you have driven down it. This is just a Google Earth shot of Sutter Street, current condition, and that's a pretty typical section of it. A component of this project, like I said, would be taking that roadway, grinding it down, excavating it out. We're excavating down roughly 24 inches, laying down 18 inches of road base, and then six to eight inches of asphalt on top of that. So it's a fairly large endeavor. It's not just laying a strip of, you know, one-inch asphalt over the top, because there's no subgrade here. We had drilled, ran a geotech, did some drilling, came up with some designs, and there's pretty much nothing under that asphalt. It was basically just paved right on top of the dirt that's out there. It's just a very old road that was never engineered to current standards. So, cost to improve this road, roughly $250,000, at the cost of the operator completely. The hope is that we'll be The hope is that we'll be able to form an assessment district. But that's a, something that hasn't quite worked out yet. So at, at this point, the operator and landowner are going to share in the costs of paving that road, which will be a benefit. I mean, this road is really heavily used. If you're out there for a half hour, it's amazing how many trucks are going in and out of there. It's, it's a pretty active area. So that, that pretty much concludes my presentation. I don't know if you guys have any questions or any questions for the landowner or Bill with Argent?
Any questions by the commissioners? Ask Commissioner Al. Go ahead, go ahead.
I was wondering if you, one of the questions that we had was again around air quality. And I was wondering if you could talk about maybe the vehicles that you'll be using, like the machines. Are they going to be, you know, diesel-powered machines? Are the trucks, trucks, are any of them going to be like low emission in any way?
Typically, the trucks that are going to be in and out of the site are your typical, over-the-road, on-highway vehicles. Your generator, generated, we're going to use a generator to power the crushing equipment. Whatever local standards are for your, your engine, tier three, I'm not exactly sure what the, what the specifics are for the engines here in the, in this area district. So it's just going to be typical fossil fueling, burning equipment, heavy equipment, diesel-powered.
Thank you. Commissioner Strohm else?
This question maybe for city staff. What happens moving forward if an assessment district is created and future improvements are to take place down this streetway? Are we going to be tearing up this road in five years to put sewer, sewer lines under it or?
Hopefully not, because we'd actually need, also need additional right-of-way to get this road up to full standards. So if there was additional right-of-way needed, hopefully, we could put the utilities in that additional area that would be beyond the current road. I think we only have something like cases like forty feet of right-of-way in some portions on those roads. So there's a lot more to it that would need to be done out there. And an assessment district, you know, also, you know, could be some years away. And also then to develop enough revenues to do those improvements. But our, our hope would be to keep the utilities to the, to extremes if possible.
And then for the applicant, can you talk a little bit more about asphalt recycling? And I mean, one of the concerns that I had was asphalt tends to be a petroleum-based product. And California petroleum-based products are treated a little differently than in other states. So I was wondering if you can maybe share a little bit more about?
Well, it's asphalt, it's concrete asphalt, which is whatever our roads and highways are typically paved. That's the type of material. Asphalt is just the term used for, you know, majority of the material is probably ninety percent aggregates and ten percent asphalt oil. The site will have an industrial SWIP, once it gets permitted, as part of the conditions of approval. And stormwater will be managed according to that industrial SWIP managed onsite. We are proposing constructing a detention basin on the north end of the site that will retain all runoff from the site and either evaporate or percolate into the groundwater.
So is that, that the basin won't be lined then?
No.
And do you have a similar setup with a detention basin at the Oakland facility?
The Oakland facility is a little tighter on room. There's a pretty substantial filter system there. It's just a matter that they don't have the room for a basin of that size. So there's a retention, there's an underground filter system and pumps and it's, it's fairly complex. It's, it's something that came out of a, a find from the previous owner. So it was, it's, it's a highly technical system that I've never seen anywhere else. So typical, typical, at these sites, typically just self-containment onsite and having a detention basin and directing runoff towards one specific point is common practice. And these sites all fall under, fall under the regional water quality control boards overseeing. And an industrial SWIP will be required and a notice of intent and most likely a discharge permit.
And then what happens with construction waste that's part, like rebar and other components?
The rebar is removed with an excavator and then that's recycled as well. I mean, steel, the going rate is anywhere from a hundred and fifty to two hundred dollars a ton. So that's got some value as well. So that's removed from the concrete or rejected in itself. I don't know, Bill, are you guys going to accept anything with rebar or reject? Okay, though, some, some sites reject it altogether if it has rebar. So, because it just takes extra processing. But that, that'll be a material that's recycled at the site or not recycled, but sorted and then shipped off to a metal recycling facility.
And then I saw in one of the pictures, my last question, I promise, the Oakland facility had fence, fencing around it and gates. Is that, is there a similar plan?
Yeah, yeah, we have six, six-foot chain link fence proposed around. There's a, roughly a six-acre area within the sixteen-acre property that's going to be the main processing area of the site. And that entire six-acre area is proposed to be fenced for public safety and also safety onsite, so. But the Oakland facility had slats for visual block, they were, they're not proposed any slats for the site.
That leads me to one more. So I noticed in the, the staff report and both, also in your presentation, that almost all of the equipment that's being brought into the site is temporary. So there's no permanent buildings, there's no permanent, everything could be picked up and moved tomorrow. Can you, can you talk a little bit more about that?
Yeah, yeah, sure. The reason for that is that this is a very on-demand type of business. The applicant will open his gates, start business, say, in six months. And he's essentially at the mercy of the construction market at that time. So there's really no way to completely predict when buildings are going to be torn down in the area or when you will be receiving material. So there might be period, long periods of time where it's a receiving site only. And there's absolutely no processing going on. And then when there is enough material stockpiled onsite and it's, it makes sense economically for the operator to mobilize, get the equipment up and going, then start processing. So that's the, the temporary. So the applicant might have equipment at his Oakland yard that he moves over for a few months and then moves offsite. Or he might have equipment that he leaves there for, for the duration, but it's not operating. I had a similar site. I don't know if any of you guys remember, there was a very similar operation underneath Cap City Freeway. Got it about three years ago, it went out of business and once, there's some development north of there that wasn't quite consistent with that type of use. And Bill was actually working for another company running that site as well. So he's, he's operated a similar facility in the city of West Sacramento before. And honestly, once, he, he had to apply for his use permit yearly for that site. It was just on a year-by-year renewal and the use permit did not get renewed one year. And the commissioners at that time urged him to seek out another suitable site and get another site like that located in the city of West Sacramento. So that was a little bit of the catalyst to get this project started and Bill's got familiarity here. But finding a suitable site is, is tough. But I think this one meets the, meets the bill with it being heavy industrial zone property within the city of West Sacramento.
Thank you for answering all my questions.
No problem. I drove all this way?
We're not done. And I, and I appreciate my commissioner's questions that have been presented. They are well-framed and, and I'm not as familiar with your, your product line and in your work. So the way I'm going to ask the questions, we're just going to be a little more broader. As far as the, you know, crushing the material and then needing the water to keep the dust down, I was looking, you know, first of all, the neighbors that could be affected and, and any toxins that could be in the air that could, you know, eventually get to someplace. Have you heard of any impact to those in the close proximity, any health conditions from your past experience?
I haven't. There's, there's nothing in the air quality report that speaks to that. Spraying down material as it comes off the conveyor line is typical practice for this type of operation. There's typically a conveyor belt that runs continuously and there's a spray bar that runs on that. And then there's a water truck that also circles around and wets the area down. The material, finished and unfinished material to keep the dust down.
So that seems to be really effective, that the dust doesn't seem to trail, continue to trail?
Yeah, yeah. And if it's not, it's very visible.
It is, okay.
Yeah, if, if there, there is a dust problem, it's, it's very visible from the street and surrounding area. And typically, the operator, if there's visible dust, there's typically an issue or complaint that comes in and then, you know, they've got problems. So all, all the conveyors are typically equipped with a, with a standard spray bar system. And it's at the operator's discretion on, you know, how much water to use and when to use it to keep the dust down. Because we do have wet periods, like today was raining, where maybe the spray bars aren't needed. And there's no sense in running the spray bars and using extra water if it's not needed, if it's not doing anything.
And are there any concerns, given that it, you know, when, you know, once it goes into the drain, that, and it goes to the, to the water, you know, the, the rest of the water? Are there any impact it could have on spreading any toxins, you know, generally, you know, beyond that in the future?
Well, the runoff is going to be contained onsite in the detention pond, so it won't be running off into the surrounding areas. And then evaporating or percolating down into the groundwater.
Okay. And then when it evaporates, does it, is there any dust from, you know, we have lots of windy days around here. Could there be any impact to the air at that point in time?
From the evaporation of the water? Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Okay. I, I just, I feel more comfortable when I ask these questions. I'm just making sure that I'm covering what the potential that happens.
It's kind of a unique use. It's similar, there's lots of these types of operations and it's going to be very similar to the operations that are occurring at mine sites up and down Jackson Highway, which probably all of us have driven by and not even noticed from time to time.
Okay. And, and, and my experience comes from working for LA County and seeing an excite plant and years later, hearing about lead contamination and things like that happening and just having to deal with that disaster. That, that's, you know.
No, nobody wants that. I mean, these, we're, we're just talking about concrete and asphalt, which is everywhere. We're all standing in a concrete building right now. So those are the, the materials that, that we're going to be handling and dealing with.
Okay. And, you know, I'm, I'm curious to know a little bit more from my fellow Commissioner Strohm Fels about the detention basin, the line, being lined and not being lined. And just, you know, helping me to understand the benefits of it being lined versus not lined. Would you be able to help me out with that so that I can?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure if I could speak to benefits or disadvantages, but I think my question was from a general line of thinking that if you're, particularly if you're recycling asphalt that came up off a road, that asphalt has tire dust, brake dust, other particulate on it and probably dumped at the site. And so even if it is getting washed off, off and staying out of the air, at some point, it is part of the water in the detention bases that could be seeping into the ground. And so I'm certainly by no means an environmental scientist or environmental expert, but that was kind of where my head was going. And usually I, I see facilities across the state that have detention basins that may have some kind of chemical or particulate in them that's dangerous to the soil be lined with some kind of rubber lining. And so if the water board's not okay with it?
There are some sites and some types of uses where the detention basin would be proper to line. However, a concrete and asphalt recycling site is, is not one of them.
So I mean, the, the water board would have jurisdiction over this, so.
Yeah.
More than not being lined than otherwise.
Yeah, and this, one of the, I haven't seen the use permit conditions, but I'm sure that there'll be a condition in there to have an industrial stormwater pollution prevention plan, which is common practice. And yeah, Bill has one at his Oakland site and he operates under that. So it's, it's common practice for these sites to have that type of a document on hand and operate underneath it.
Okay. Well, good. I'm, I'm done with my question. Anybody else have questions at this point? All right. And I, thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
It was thorough and very helpful. And at this point, there are no requests to speak for this item for public comment. So I will close that part of it and bring it back for a discussion among the commissioners if you have additional questions or comments.
I just want to say I appreciate staff bringing this item to workshop with us. You know, clearly there, this area of town has some infrastructure challenges that I think the city is working really hard to try to balance with a project that is willing to help solve some of them, but also bring some unique challenges in its use and what, what's happening. And what, what I've heard tonight is, seems to be a, a really good effort on all sides to try to balance the equation as best as possible, given the infrastructure situation there. So thanks for bringing this item before us, before the public hearing. I appreciate that.
Any other comments from anybody? I just have one quickly, just to add that, you know, I, I, you know, the concrete and asphalt recycling, you know, facility, I, I know it's hard to track, you know, based on what you told me in the history, to be able to find a location. Hope we can, you know, accommodate that. And you found an interesting location, managing to fit all of your needs in here and appreciate the work that you're doing, including repairing the street, you know, and bringing it up to where we can, bringing up. The neighbor mentioned that. He said, you know, I don't mind that facility going there as long as the street is paved. And, and I think that's mainly what, you know, just bringing an additional comfort to that neighbor was, is a big plus. So just wanted to provide that feedback and looking forward to hearing more about it when it comes back to us. And the, the public hearing for this project is scheduled for June second. So it'll be back for public hearing then. Okay, all right. No additional comments then. I'll move to our next agenda item. An update regarding the city's findings of adequate progress towards the two-hundred-year level of flood protection. Mr., is Mr. Tilly going to provide that presentation?
Yes, I'll, I'll start this and then my colleague Greg Faben, who is our city's flood protection manager, who you may not have seen at planning commission probably ever, will help, help close this out for us tonight. So as the commissioner may recall, last year, we amended our general plan to put some additional flood protection policies in there that were related out of the SB five, which is, you know, been on the books since two thousand and seven. And as part of that package, it set up a, a protocol, which we're now at, where we will need to be making what's called a finding of adequate progress towards getting to our goal and the state's goal of two-hundred-year flood protection by two thousand and twenty-five. Annually, we will be able to make this finding that we are making adequate progress toward that goal. And will this be, this year will be the first year where we need to start doing that. Why we're bringing this to you is, is in part to keep the commission aware of everything that we're doing flood protection-wise as it certainly relates back to the work that we do here at the planning commission and also the general plan role that the planning commission has had. But also that if we are unable to make these findings, for whatever reason, we basically can't approve anything. No more development agreements, building permits, just other discretionary approvals. So this is very important. And so as much as, you know, we believe that the city and Wesafka are well-positioned on this, you know, we will need to be revisiting it annually as our, as our work changes. So the, the adequate progress, you know, is defined, we've included that on page three of your staff report. And this, it's a fairly broad definition of what adequate progress, you know, means in this particular context. But it really gets to a lot of things and they're not just, you know, building improvements, but then have, you know, funding for those improvements, noting that these projects, you know, may take many years to, to deliver. And as much as Wesafka has been able to, you know, complete several improvements around the city, that what they call the early implementation projects, which are also detailed in your staff report. And they're also about to, you know, really commence a very large one, which is the Southport Levy Project, which, you know, Greg can expand on for you if you'd like. You know, there is much more work to be done over time to get to our two-hundred-year goal. So as part of our efforts to get input on this effort, Greg and his team have taken us to the TMI Commission earlier this week, bringing it to planning commission tonight. We'll be going to council preliminarily in two weeks and then back to council in June to actually make the formal finding. So we provided our first, you know, draft of the adequate progress report to you as part of your packet tonight. And so at this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And, you know, Greg can also elaborate on some of the projects that Wesafka is doing if the commission is so interested. And so with that, happy to answer questions.
Any questions at this time? Would you like an additional presentation by Greg on any of the projects?
So, you know, when, when we're talking about improvements along our waterfront, particularly in, in some of the existing communities, not necessarily, I mean, Southport, yes, is part of that, that Southport extension. But I know that the greatest public interest has always been around, you know, right-of-way, et cetera. And so I was wondering if you could speak a little bit to, to some of those concerns. Do you remember what I'm asking about? How, how far inland we're coming for the flood protection and, and existing homes?
Well, so the West Sacramento Levy Improvement Program really is a program that will address the entire levee system for the city, which not only includes the perimeters, levees of the, of the city limits, around the city limits, but also the levees that are created or that were created when the Deepwater Ship Channel was constructed, which now bisect our city. There's also levees that are along the Deepwater Ship Channel that extend twenty miles. miles below the city limit, which also are considered part of the city's levee system. But specifically to land, uh, acquisition of land for, for projects, um, the Southport project and, and the use of the land in that particular area, um, provided a unique opportunity for us in, in the construction of this project to do something very different, uh, along the Sacramento River and, and sort of in this urban corridor, um, with the creation of a setback levy, which really does two things, it allows for us to, um, almost entirely mitigate for the impacts, uh, to habitat that are created by any flood risk reduction project, really be able to mitigate almost entirely onsite. And in addition, we're able to create advanced mitigation that will, um, be creditable towards the remainder of the, of the project, or projects that we construct over the next eight to nine years. You know, so we can complete the entire, uh, system by 2025. Um, so, we have acquired, or are in the process of acquiring all of the property needed to construct this project. We have almost all of the rights, either in fee or possession and use, to be able to construct the project, and we anticipate that we'll be, uh, awarding a construction project later this year and beginning construction on the, the levy improvements. The first phase of the project is almost complete, and that's the replacement of the South River Road that's gonna be impacted, which currently resides on top of the current levy, and, um, so all the asphalt's been completed, and, um, we're almost two months ahead of schedule on that one, so that's actually was the kickoff of the Southport project. Just doesn't look much like a levy project.
And then, oh, do you have, bring you back on this question? And then, I was wondering, um, from what I've gathered from some of our partners in the region, um, are, Wesafka's been doing, um, a, a really stellar job on, on being on track. Could you talk a little bit about timing, anticipated timing, and how our projects compare to comparable projects, uh, around the region?
Well, I don't know about necessarily how our projects compare with comparable projects. I think that our Southport project is really not comparable to other projects around the region. It's very unique, it's really a showcase project that both Wesafka's very proud of, the state is, it's highly supported by the state, it's highly supported by the federal government, Army Corps of Engineers in particular. The, um, I don't know if you're familiar with our, the West Sacramento General Reevaluation Report, which was just completed? So, well, let me talk about that real briefly.
Right.
When we embarked on the West Sacramento Levy Improvement Program back in 2006, 2007, just after Hurricane Katrina, um, we initially, so we kind of a two-pronged approach. Implement flood risk reduction projects as quickly as possible partnering with the state, and then partnering with the federal government to establish a federal interest in a future federal project. That basically means they're gonna study our levee system, determine that it's a federal interest to improve the system, and then provide resources to carry out that project. And that took the form of a general reevaluation report, where they reevaluated the West Sacramento project. The chief's report, the culmination of that effort, which began in 2009, um, was just executed last month, and our project is now being presented to both the Senate and the House committees that are developing the next Water Resource Development Act bill that will provide the congressional authorization, and then future federal funding for our project. So we're, we're on the doorstep of having that project congressionally authorized. And what was the original question?
That's ve- no, that's very helpful. That's, that's helpful, thank you.
Mr. Trump, yes?
Uh, I was hoping, uh, you could touch on quickly, uh, what will happen to the old South River Road for the Southport Levy Project, and, uh, what are the plans to try to either make sure we maintain or improve some of the trails that I know run all over these levees for recreational uses? And, and if you have any suggestions for things we should be thinking about or doing from our, our perspective as, as this plan moves forward?
So, uh, first on South River Road, um, a lot of the, certainly the, the end segments of the, the project, the very north segment and the very southern segment, um, those levees, those segments of levees will be repaired in place, and so they'll be degraded by about one-third their height, and then reconstructed with proper engineered material, and they'll contain a slurry wall down, down the center of it to protect against some geotechnical things. And so we will, we will not be returning, you know, the, the pavement on top of the road. In addition, we're, um, degrading, um, segments in the northern section of the project to connect the river to what's, to this, the offset areas that are created, so when, when we create the setback levy, excuse me, inland, uh, from the existing levy, it creates this sort of channel. And by degrading the former levy, we're able to connect the Sacramento River and create that very valuable and much-needed habitat. And so, the old levy will be not continuous any longer. Uh, the one segment of the levy that will remain continuous with South, South River Road is between the two marinas.
Right.
Um, access roads are gonna be provided, uh, from the new Village Parkway, up and across the new setback levy, and they'll land on the current South River Road, one just north of, uh, the northern marina, one just south, uh, will do the same thing, just south of the southern marina, which will create two accesses, both in and out, or create a little circulation path. And that's the only segment of South River Road that will remain, that will need to be maintained by the city, um, into the future. And in our next meeting, we will be bringing back a broader discussion of sort of the post-levee improvement, um, you know, situation, and what, you know, what opportunities there may be.
Yeah, it'll, it'll speak directly to the question you just raised. What I'll say briefly, cause I think you'll get much more value out of that presentation than you will by me trying to describe it. That one has lots of pictures, it's easier to... But we are, um, the project itself does not construct any recreational features. Um, we need to make sure that we have enough funding to do the entire project from a flood risk reduction standpoint, but it does create a template that is ripe for, uh, those recreational amenities. There will be a continuous levy, um, via the setback levy that still connects the northern end to the southern end, um, which is, you know, a, a really nice facility for having either an improved or unimproved trail. There's also maintenance road on both sides of the, of the new levy, on the land side and on the water side, that are ripe for some type of trail access, so, uh, there'll be lots of opportunities for, for future amenities.
Great, thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other questions for the commissioners?
Uh, I just have one question on, on the financing. I understand with the congressional, um, approval, is that the final then for all of the financing, or is there a need to go back?
So the congressional authorization, um, means it's eligible for federal funding. We still have to lobby and, uh, you know, to get on the president's budget and get the project funded. By way of example, Natomas was recent, was authorized by Congress in 2014, then was on the president's budget this year in 2016, so it can take a, a couple of years to receive that federal, those federal appropriations. But in the interim, the, the district core office who would lead this project, um, they do have a annual O and M budget, an annual, annual work plan budget, where they, um, program monies for the preliminary engineering and design, um, but they won't, they can't go to final design and construction until they receive the, the federal appropriations for the entire project.
Okay, thanks. And at this time, um, are you, as far as, um, making the finding of adequate progress, feedback from the commissioners, are you looking for anything specific, um, any direction and, you know, for additional work, or...
Well, we mostly wanted to introduce this concept to the, to the, uh, Planning Commission, um, you know, given your sort of uber role related back to land use and our ability to continue implementing our general plan and specific plans, you know, going forward. As I think, as we mentioned, you know, we are, believe we are well-positioned on this to be able to make this finding, you know, this year, and we're already, already looking ahead to the next couple of years, since we will need to make this annually. You know, as conditions around us may change, and, uh, you know, this finding may become perhaps somewhat more challenging to make, uh, but as Greg's and his team makes, also makes progress on improving these projects, hopefully it can be, it can be fairly routine to make. Uh, but we will need to bring it every year, and we wanted to make sure this was on, on the Planning Commission's, you know, radar, uh, because it is very important and it is new. Uh, this is the first, you know, we've been preparing for this, but this is the first year we have to actually make those findings. And so again, we will go to council in June to ask them to make that formal finding for this year.
I, I would just add that, you know, the flood protection strategy, or flood protection itself, has been one of the council's top priorities for, in the cities for years. Um, this is sort of underscores, you know, adds an additional complexity or layer to the importance of the continuing our flood protection strategy, and continue to make progress, you know, to improving the levees.
Right, I agree. I agree that, you know, ever since, um, Katrina, that I, I think our city, um, for, was able to have the foresight that, um, you know, we, we were going to have to make some changes, and the challenges to, you know, as, as our city is developing and growing, um, and then looking at our neighboring cities, having, you know, having to be stalled because they, they weren't ready, and we were, I think, ahead of the game, and, uh, given that our city council worked diligently to make sure that we obtained the funding, had, um, you know, the planning in place, had the infrastructure within the, you know, administration to, to move and, you know, and then also lobbying aggressively for the funding, I think was, was really key. So I, I feel that, you know, we've done more than adequate progress, but, you know, we do have some administrative things that we have to check off, but, um, I, I think we've done a really good job.
Yeah, and this is also, you know, part of our goal here, is, is we are a city that does plan and will grow and should grow, uh, from a regional standpoint, uh, but we need to do that in a responsible manner, and taking our flood protection obligations, you know, seriously. So, um, you know, we will be, you know, taking this seriously as well, and presenting the evidence as, you know, pretend and that's in the report, that's attached to your staff report, um, tonight, um, and, and for council, cause, you know, even though, um, you know, state and federal agencies, you know, don't have direct, you know, oversight over us making this finding, um, it is still an obligation under law, and we, you know, will tend to make that, um, in a, you know, a factual basis.
And a, a more up-to-date draft of the adequate progress report, um, will be presented to the city council on May 18.
Okay.
And so, as you look through this, you may find some gaps.
There are gaps, there are some attachments.
Yes, and so I just wanted to just touch on that, that those gaps will be filled in, you know, um, for the council at the May 18, uh, meeting, so if you want to check back and see how those gaps are filled in, check the, check the, uh, the council report for that night.
That would be great, okay. And, and if there's any additional items you would like to, um, you know, email over to us, um, David, that would be great, so we have that just in our inboxes.
Yeah, we, we certainly can do that, and I hope that receiving the packet link via email this time was helpful.
Oh, yeah. Okay, good. Are, are there any questions, comments, feedback? Looking forward to what the outcome is at the end of, of all of this, but I'm, we're doing a great job already. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Um, and, uh, we don't have anybody in the audience at this time to open it up for public discussion, unless Katie has something there, but I don't have anything, um, so we will close the public discussion for any comments or questions, and, um, uh, we will not go next to our informal discussion item. Are there any questions, like, or comments by our commissioners under informal discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to touch on, uh, following up on Mr. Tilly's most recent comment. I want to thank staff for taking the additional efforts to send out the packet electronically to note publicly. I did not bring my, like, my paper packet, uh, and it worked out very well and very conveniently. And, um, I know that, you know, we're gonna pilot this maybe for a few more meetings, or if that's the commission's will, but, um, I found the transition very easy. And, uh, in the meantime, while we're piloting, if, uh, staff would like to just not drop off a paper packet to my house and eliminate a stop, they're more than welcome to do so. I will continue to use the electronic format while we're testing this option. And then, uh, on the second option, I want to say thank you to staff for sending out the rules, the commission that I shared with everyone, uh, with the chair and staff from San Diego. I know we, we don't have the full contingent here tonight, so maybe tonight's not the best time to bring that up, but, uh, it would, would like to bring that back some point for some, some broader discussion on what people thought about it, once they got a chance to read it.
Well, yeah, we can, anybody have any comments at this time regarding the rules? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's the type of item, if we want to have broader discussion, we do need to agendize it, and I think it would be best if we had our full commission, or as close to as possible for that discussion.
Sure.
Um, so it's something we can look at, at our, if, next, in our next couple of meetings, if, um, that's the desire of the commission.
And I was actually looking at Commissioner Laporte, who's our alternate, who may be there the next time, but you can always provide any comments anytime you would like.
Thank you.
More than happy to accept your comments. You are one of us here. Okay. Okay, if there's nothing else, I'm, I'll, um, look forward to a motion to adjourn, and, oh, well, we should just adjourn.